Have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Proton Man.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Yu.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call for that?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move to item three, the invocation, and Pastor Kelty is here with us this evening from Community of Christ Church, and he will be providing our invocation. Please stand.
It's always a joy to come to here. Thank you. Oh, our divine Creator, we thank you that we're able to meet here together this evening, and that we're able to conduct the business of this city of Temple City. May you do so that indeed we might provide that direction that this community needs to make it become an even better community that is ready, willing, and able to help those in need. Those who want, those who seeking a good environment and a nice place to live. We all know there's very many difficulties and trials to do this, dear Creator. We know that with your help, we can do that. So we offer you this prayer this evening, that we beg your care may be attuned to you and the world around us, in the needs of this community, that indeed we might be able to do those things to make this a better community for all its citizens. Therefore, let this be our prayer to you this evening, through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and the days to follow, for being honor and glory to this city, and make this an even better city than it is already. This we do ask in all humility. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to move item five further down the meeting, and we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will now hear those comments regarding items not listed. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay.
Mayor, we have.
Suzie, Suzie? So Suzie Powell Rutherford. Suzie, come on up to the podium and welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Suzie Powell Rutherford. I am the event lead for Relay for Life of Santa Anita Park. So I'm just here to invite all of you and to let you know, you know, Temple City had their own relay, and they are no longer doing it, so I've absorbed Temple City. They've joined our relay. So the date is September 6th, 7th. It is a 24-hour event held at the infield of Anita Park and the racetrack. It is a free event for everyone to come out. I will be here tomorrow. All of your music in the park, so I know one of the housewives of Temple City have booths out there. So I will be bringing flyers. I just got the date yesterday. So as soon as I have flyers for it, we'll be promoting it out there also and inviting people to come. And cancer survivors were there to honor, and I know he's been a big part of Relay as well, so, and I know it used to be here. So I just want to let you guys know, it is still happening, but it's happening. We're now Temple City, Arcadia, Monrovia, Duarte, all the cities together. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that's what's happening, and that we would love to see you come out. And if there's anyone here that is a cancer survivor that would like to be honored, I would love to honor you. So just let me know. My information is on that paper.
Suzie, thank you so much for taking the time to come.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any others? Okay, going to close public comment. We move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We have a roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Man.
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist.
Yes.
We move to item eight, public hearing, adoption of resolution number 25-5817, approving the master fees and fines schedule for fiscal year 2025-2026. And Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. Before you today is the fee schedule that includes the CPI increase of 3% for most of our fees. Fees that were rounding to less than a dollar were kept at their current fee schedule rate. We discussed this extensively along with the budget at our last meeting on June 3rd. If you have any questions, we're here, but this is a public hearing, so we'll hear from any members of the community. And we look for, recommendation is adoption of the fee schedule.
Mr. Kong, do you have anything?
I did have a presentation for it, but it's attached with the budget, so we could go over that too later on if you have any additional questions.
Okay, perfect. Okay, any questions from councilmembers? Okay. No?
No, sorry.
Sure. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, close the public hearing. And no last comments or anything from anyone? All right. Can I have a motion, please?
Mayor Sternquist, I move that we adopt resolution number 25-5817, approving the master fees and fines schedule for fiscal year 25-26.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call? It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Man.
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move back to item five, and we have a commissioner. Where is Beverly? Commissioner Wong, and we would like to honor her for her service with the city. And Adam, would you share some nice thoughts?
Sure. Commissioner. That's okay. I'll respond to anything.
It's like the second time.
We changed your name.
Second time I've done that. I don't know why.
Yes, Commissioner Beverly Wong, I've worked with her all the way back from January of 2014, when she was a General Plan Advisory Committee member. And starting at that point until today, she has dedicated herself to the public service of the public, and has been very thoughtful in her leadership doing that. She served on that committee from January 2014 to October of 2017, where she attended 20 meetings and helped set the vision for the future of Temple City with, by preparing the general plan and the crossroads specific plan. And so she's had an indelible imprint on the city and will for, up until 2050. Following her work on the General Plan Advisory Committee, she then joined the Planning Commission in July of 2019. And I asked her, I said, "Do you remember what even was on the agenda back on your first, very first meeting?" I'd ask the councilmembers the same thing. Do you remember what was the first meeting you attended? It was a project at 5718 Temple City Boulevard, and it's a four-unit Spanish colonial revival-style building that's just been completed and looks very handsome, so thank you. Over the course of her time on the Planning Commission, she served in more than 52 meetings, where she oversaw the preparation of the zoning code update, the conditional use permit for Primrose Park, the plans for the mixed-use project at Begonia on Rosemead Boulevard, the ADU ordinance, the SB 9 ordinance, the mixed-use project at Cloverly and Las Tunas, the housing element, ACE Hardware, and our very first density bonus project, affordable housing project at 6119 Temple City Boulevard. She also served as Chair of the Planning Commission from July of 2023 to June of 2024. And she served on the commission during COVID, which I have to say was not the easiest time as we were trying to juggle how to do it online. So thank you for hanging in there while we did all that. All told, Commissioner Wong devoted 72 evenings to the service of her community. Nights she could have easily spent with her family or watching TV, but instead she decided to invest in a place she calls home. So on behalf of the city staff and her fellow commissioners, and I'm sure the council, we express our deep appreciation for your service and your commitment. It's not everyone who is willing to listen to me drone on and on at a planning commission meeting or to read my voluminous reports or that of my staff, but we appreciate your service, your patience, and your dedication to Temple City. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council members that would like to comment before we give Beverly a presentation and take a picture, will you?
So in addition to everything Scott just said, I just also want to thank Beverly for her many years of service. I had the pleasure of also serving with her on the General Plan Advisory Committee. So we went through that journey together. Additionally, for those not aware, she and I are also work, we both work for LA County as engineers. So we share that common bond, and also on the county side, we've also had some projects together in the past. So I for one know firsthand how skilled and knowledgeable she is in her craft. So when she joined the Planning Commission, I was very delighted to have someone of her expertise and background to contribute to the Planning Commission. So I'm sorry to see you leave the Planning Commission, but at the same time, like Scott said, we all have things we're looking forward to, and I'm sure with your kids and your husband and your family, there's probably a lot of other things you'd rather be spending your time with. But don't forget us. We're a pretty small city, so we'll definitely see you around and hope you continue to be a part of our community.
Anyone else? Okay, if you wouldn't mind coming up front, Beverly and.
Can I say a few things?
Of course. And Scott, thank you so much.
I think I've been very lucky to serve on the commission. We have such great staff, and we never had to, I mean, they present everything in a very orderly manner each time, and it saves us a lot of time to try to understand. So that's why I'm lucky, and also I'm lucky to have that, a good panel, a very diverse panel that brings comments and opinions from different aspect, different age range, different background. I think this is good. I'm just taking a short break because lately I cannot, I cannot accept myself being late. So then, I think I was late one time. I totally forgot about it. So I'm like, maybe it's time for me to take a break, such that, because then, I think it's easier when we were in the office. I mark it on the calendar, which day we go, so every day I look at the calendar. Now that we're not in the office all the time, the schedule and everything is, I think it's confusing. Then when you come in on this day, you come in on that day. It used to be very regular, and I won't miss it. And I'm always very on time and all that stuff. So when I miss one meeting, I'm like, you know, this is not acceptable. Is there something wrong with me? And I think I need to maybe take it slower and then adjust to this confusing schedule.
Well, we so appreciate all the time and effort that you gave while you were here, and who knows, after your break, maybe you'll be back.
Yes, yes, definitely. I'm happy to serve as long as I have the time.
Thank you.
And as long as I know I can fulfill, you know, I give whatever comments I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly, this is presented on behalf of the citizens of Temple City to Beverly Wong, 2019 to 2025 Planning Commissioner, in recognition of your dedicated service as a planning commissioner to the affairs of the community and residents of the city of Temple City. Thank you so much. We're going to have Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's Beverly here.
Beverly, move this way.
No, actually. No. Mayor, move this way. Beverly, move this way. There we go. All right, that's about you then. Okay, here we go. Are you smiling, Beverly? There we go. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And Beverly? This is for you.
Are we going to get a smile back?
Okay, then I believe we're on 8B. Public hearing, adoption of resolution number 25-5818, approving the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. And the City Council has requested to adopt the proposed city budget for this time period. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. At your meeting of June 3rd, we went through an extensive study and review of the proposed 25-26 budget. This budget, as presented today, reflects any changes that were requested during the budget study session and really fulfills the desires of both the community as reflected through your legislative actions in adopting this budget. We, this year's budget was a little tighter than in past years. As just a quick reminder, this is the first year that we do not have what was called the ARPA funding that was, that we used for the last prior two fiscal years to help us offset our cost in law enforcement. So we're back to what I described as a more normal budget, and it was tighter than it has been in the past. But we were able to fund all the major projects, including making some extensive capital improvements, including funding for Juno Parks and some road maintenance projects. But as noted during the budget study session, in terms of road maintenance and longer-term capital projects, we still have, while we are operationally balanced, meaning our day-to-day expenditures and our day-to-day revenue meet the needs of the community, meet the needs of what you have directed us to do from programming and services to the community, our longer-term infrastructure needs are underfunded. Our longer-term infrastructure needs in terms of our buildings and particularly our roads are still underfunded, meaning we do not have enough revenue on an ongoing basis to meet those needs. So that is still a challenge that is ahead of us. And part of that discussion will happen this fall when we get the audited numbers for fiscal year 24-25. We know what your fund balance is at. We're going to have a discussion both from a strategic plan standpoint and a fund balance standpoint, because they're both interlinked, how you want to look at where you're taking your fund balance. The last few years, we've had the great fortune of having the ARPA funds to temporarily, one-time inflate our fund balance, meaning we have money in our savings account that we've been investing. We've been investing it in our parks, and we've been investing it in our infrastructure. But with that money now spent and no longer there, we are back to where we have been post-COVID and in a place that is a little bit more steady and not with the extra funds that we had available to make those investments. So with that today, we are proud to present to you the budget for fiscal year 25-26. And Alex will go over a brief summary, not as extensive as we did during the study session two weeks ago. But if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. So I'll turn it over to Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As Mr. Cook mentioned, just want to thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26. The presentation tonight will briefly go over the proposed general fund and general fund, special fund budgets, which include one-time expenditures and capital projects. And we'll also take a look at a five-year general fund outlook, and we'll briefly go over recommendations. So here's a summary of the fiscal year 25-26 general fund revenues and expenditures. Operating revenues exceeds our operating expenditures by about $300,000, and this is what Mr. Cook was mentioning. Since we've exhausted the use of our ARPA funds for public safety contracts with the Sheriff Department, we'll be funding our complete sheriff contract now with the general fund. One-time expenditures and capital projects such as Serrano and Sultana Park projects are also included, and that total is about 6.2 million with the one-time projects. This requires the city then to contribute about 5.9 million from the general fund reserves. However, staff will continue to look for local county grants to fund these park projects. And we do have some funding, some small funding from Measure A that I'll later go over to. So here's a breakdown of the general fund one-time expenditures and capital projects, which you can see from the pie chart on the left. Some of the one-time expenditures, for example, the purchase of computer replacements are projects that we couldn't fully complete this fiscal year, so we're requesting to re-budget it in fiscal year 25-26. The 5.8 million in orange, as you see, represents our total proposed general fund capital projects for fiscal year 25-26. The pie chart on the right represents the itemization of those capital projects, so provide you a little more detail. And from which you can see there's the two-part projects, and then also our City Hall lobby and landscaping projects are also included. Moving on to the estimated general fund balance, the ending fund balance for the general fund at June 30th, 2025, which is just a few weeks away, is projected to be 31.2 million. And you can see that highlighted in green, and also it's the same number above that on the right there, in the top chart there. We have, this fiscal year, what's a little bit different, as Mr. Cook had mentioned, is that with our use of ARPA funds and some of our capital projects carrying over into the next fiscal year, this provides you a new kind of way to see where our ending general fund balance is. So in the past, our capital projects typically were done in one fiscal year. Now that we're, some of the capital projects are taking a little bit longer, the payments are falling into the next fiscal year, we have to carry over some of those budgeted carryover costs. And so this is a way to give you a better projection of what the ending fund balances are for the general fund. So as, you can also see that, as I mentioned, our carryover projects, we have about $847,000 in carryover projects from this fiscal year that we're going to carry over into fiscal year 25-26. And part of that portion includes the City Hall lobby project there. And so at the end of the fiscal year, you'll see that for 630-26, we're estimating about 24.5 million for the ending general fund balance. We'll give you a better number as the fiscal year closes up, probably closer to, I would say, September, once we get all the invoices in from all our vendors. But that's what our projection is right now, is about 24 point, I'm sorry, 31.2 million at the end of June 30th, 2025. Okay, so here is a recap of our special funds. And our special funds staff anticipates carrying over CPI projects totaling 5 point, or 6.5 million into fiscal year 25-26, which is highlighted in gray there. This is largely made up of 24-25 street resurfacing project and the Las Tunas Drive Improvement Project. For fiscal year 25-26, we anticipate special fund revenues totaling 10.6 million. This includes gas tax, metro funds, RMRA, which is also known as Road Maintenance and Repair Act Fund, and our lighting and landscaping funds. These funds are typically designed for street maintenance, water, or lighting improvements, landscaping, and transportation. We're also projecting expenditures and capital improvement projects totaling 9.3 million. This includes one-time expenditures for the purchase of boom trucks and debris loaders. We also have budgeted an additional 3.4 million for new capital projects for fiscal year 25-26. Overall, our estimated total special fund balance is projected to be 18.1 million at June 30th, 2026. Here's an itemization of the proposed new projects for fiscal year 25-26. We're hoping to receive about 185,000, as I previously mentioned, for Measure A, which is county park funds for the Serrano Park Project. And as previously mentioned, we'll continue to seek out other funding opportunities to fund the parks. For streets and sidewalks, we're planning to use about 1.5 million in Prop C funds for the Lower Azusa and H-SIP funds for traffic signal improvements. And lastly, we have two grants. One is for an LED lighting, and the other is for the solar project. Looking at the general fund five-year projection, we based our estimates conservatively based upon a 3.1% growth, a modest growth across the board going into 29-30. With expenditures, we've anticipated increases with some headwind, as you can kind of see in the latter years of 29-30. You'll also see that our surplus seems to fluctuate between the years, and that's mainly due to additional costs that the city incurred for election years. So for example, 26-27 fiscal year, you'll see that we have a larger surplus, and that's because there's not an election, that's a non-election year. Our expenditure projections also include increases in insurance and public safety costs and goods and services. However, overall, the city continues to maintain a healthy general fund balance, as I mentioned. But we do, as I mentioned, anticipate some future rising costs, mainly due to market volatility, you know, and general liability insurance, as I previously mentioned. All these items add up into the future years. Staff will continue to provide updates on any revenue and expenditure changes that we see in the future, and definitely will then update our models and projections going into the future. So in conclusion, we have a balanced general fund operating budget while maintaining our city programs and services. Since ARPA funds have been completely exhausted, our public safety expenditures will once again be fully funded with the general fund starting this 25-26 fiscal year. We'll continue, we're continuing to invest in our community with additional park projects and capital infrastructure improvements. We're not reducing staffing levels, but we are requesting an additional part-time staff to help assist the community in the community. to help assist the community in the community development department. And lastly, our general fund reserves continue to be healthy and will continue to grow. Just at certain points later on into the future, it will be slower, it'll be less than it is now. And with that said, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the Budget Resolution 25-5818. Are there any questions?
Mayor Chavez? Okay. All right. Can we have, I'm going to open up public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, going to close public hearing. No council questions? Yes.
Just before I add any, any other deliberations, just want to thank Alex, want to thank the entire executive team, want to thank all the staff as well. Part of the reason why we do so well on the expenditure side is because everybody treats the funding that comes into the city as, as a true public trust in the sense that this is their money that's meant to deliver public services. So I appreciate all the staff as well, and also appreciate the council's guidance. And we use the word fiscally conservative, but fiscally conservative, but you can see the level of investments that we're making back in the community. And we wouldn't have been able to make those levels of investments back into the community if we weren't strategic and careful on how we provide expanded services. So thank you to, to all of you in this process. Again, this is my 10th budget with you, so I appreciate all of your leadership and support going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any final comments?
I just, one, one final comment. Just again, I want to thank, kind of reiterate your comments. I do appreciate all the work that goes into putting this document together. And I want to bring up one comment I had from our discussion two weeks ago that I'm hoping we can get a follow-up discussion in the upcoming fiscal year regarding deferred maintenance costs and how we can plan for that for the next budget. Because that's a much more complicated topic that we're not going to be able to cover for this cycle. But again, just as Alex mentioned earlier, a lot of our capital projects are coming out of unassigned general fund balance, which is necessary for the policy decisions that we're making. But if we were to look at deferred maintenance as potentially also coming out of general fund, then I think there needs to be some more planning for council to be able to make those decisions in the future. Because some of these are going to be high-ticket items, which have been alluded to, like the Live Oak Park Community Center, amongst other things. So with so many things kind of coming together, I think it's better for us to get an idea of what that price tag looks like over the course of multiple years, so that we're not taking them in these bits and chunks. I know we like to use the term one-time expenditures. I'm hoping we can eventually go away from using that term and start looking at deferred maintenance as a planned annual process instead of take it as we go kind of, kind of manner.
Brian, do you have any idea when we're going to do our strategic planning?
So we want to wait, Mayor Sternquist, and Mayor Protem may bring some very valid points. So what we want to do is we want to close out the fiscal year of fiscal year 2425. We'll have that sometime in mid-September, so I would thinking late September, we would have that discussion. So we'll have an audit, we'll have, it won't be an official audit, but the auditors will provide us with a good idea of where we're ending fiscal year 2425. You'll know where fund balance is, we'll know how, where we are, where we are landing in terms of what type of operating surplus we're going to have at the end of that year as well, so that we can better plan for what Mayor Protem Mann is pointing out is actually start, either talk about strategically the use of our fund balance for deferred maintenance or how we can start to program in deferred maintenance into our operating budget where we can and where you, where we have the give and ability to do that. So that's, so once we have those numbers, we'll feel a little more confident in having that discussion with you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion for this item?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 25-5818, approving the budget and appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine, unfinished business, none, new business, none. Update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. Thank you again for approving the budget and going through our, our cycle again. Again, to Mayor Protem's point, those are very salient and important points, especially with the fact that ARPA funding has gone away. And it was a nice pot of money to be able to make some really, do some really cool projects. And speaking of one of those cool projects, the Saturday at 9:00 AM will be the opening of the Live Oak Park Playground. If you haven't seen it or you haven't watched, I've had the privilege, some of our staff, not that we've been playing on the equipment whatsoever, but it's been, it's, it is unique and a design that is worthy of, of what this community deserves. And so thank you to the council for making that important decision. So 9:00 AM on this coming Saturday, official opening. You'll, you'll see a little bit of work still happening, just the, just little tweaks here and there, but it's, it's, it's passed all its safety checks, it's ready to go. So we're quite excited.
The, I forget what we call them, the markers, are, are those up or are those still coming later on? The ones we decided on?
Signs?
Signs.
That's coming, that's coming later, yes.
Oh, okay.
The location's reserved, that's, that's going to be fine, but the fabrication's going to take a little longer. So that won't, that won't be on display just yet. You'll just see a bunch of kids running to the rocket. So it'll be fun. On top of that, our normals are, we were kicking off our summer activities here at Temple City. Last week was, last Wednesday was our first concert in the park. Good turnout for our first concert. Usually it's a little slower and things start to gear up. We had a good crowd, good band. Wednesdays through August, every Wednesday, so we're quite excited. Thursday is Summer Night Bites with the, with our Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be along the stretch of Las Tunas, I think Alice's Kitchen, Cloverleaf, and a few others.
El Rey Senor.
El Rey Senor, thank you. And so many of our wonderful restaurants that we have, and we thank the Chamber of Commerce for doing this event to highlight one of our important business sectors in our community, which is our restaurants. And we, Temple City is known for some of its interesting restaurants and fun restaurants throughout, in the San Gabriel Valley. So we're proud of them and proud of the fact that we can highlight those in our community. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Jerry, Mr. Jan Bazin.
And, sorry, and coupled with that on Thursday as well, we have, we will have Neighborhood Watch at 5:30.
Live Oak Park.
Live Oak Park. So learn about safety and then come out and eat.
What time does the Bites, Summer Bites start?
5:30.
5:30 as well. But, but that's a rolling 5:30. It's not, it's not a programmed 5:30. It starts at 5:30, but you can come in any time.
Okay.
So there's not, there's not a program, it's, it's a walking tour, and you can, they give you tickets and you sample the foods of the various cuisines of all of our restaurants.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Update from our city attorney?
Thanks. I'm going to put this over to next time. Last meeting, council member, you asked some questions about local taxation of online streaming, and I had a report on that, but with him gone tonight, I'd rather wait till he comes back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you. I have a couple items. First of all, my, my other daytime job is been over at Live Oak Park, running our Little League tournaments that time of the year again. And happy to report, as I do every year, that we get a lot of different cities that come into the park, and they're always commenting on what a nice park we have. I know Adam's sitting back there in the back, so please pass on to your staff, they do a great job, and get a lot of compliments on the condition and the park. And they have also noticed and commented to me about the playground. So we have another tournament coming up in, I think in a couple of weeks at Live Oak Park, and I'm sure many of the kids of the visiting families will probably be using the playground a lot as well. So good job. And also, there is a championship game tomorrow. If anybody doesn't have anything to do other than going to the concert, you can maybe do both, but the championship game tomorrow night at 7 o'clock is actually between Temple City National Team and East Alhambra Team, so it should be a good game. Should be a good game, yeah. Unfortunately, it wasn't Councilmember Chen's son's team, but they did get to the semifinals, and they did a great job. They did a great job. We almost had a Temple, all Temple City championship, but didn't quite make it. Thank you to the volunteers. We had our volunteer appreciation dinner last Friday, and that was very well attended, and, and good job to all those, and of course, to all the volunteers. We, as we said many times, we could not offer the services and events in our city without their help, no question. Look forward to the Live Oak Park Playground, very excited about it. I know a lot of people I've talked to are excited, and I expect a huge turnout, and I know Adam does too as well, so looking forward to that. Somebody may have seen on Facebook, we have an adult contingent, contingent over in Huxbury right now. The, as you know, we have our ambassador program that's in our high school students every year. They'll be going in August, but an adult trip went there this year. I think there's about seven or eight adults that are there, and it looks like they're having a great time and staying with some of the families that come, that come here as well. So safe travels for them. I had a question. I know Adam's here, and I don't know if you want to get up and answer it, or, I did notice we had a flyer going out for the Dodger Night. Is that still a game that's on? I, it seemed from the flyer, wasn't, was it a certain date? And I think they said it was, it might be a bobblehead, but I don't know if it is or not.
I'd have to double-check on the specific date. It's, we opened up the registration.
Yeah.
Last week. We still have spaces available, but the date of the game is in August.
Yeah, it's in August, I know.
Yes.
A few people have commented to me about the price. It seems to have gone up quite a bit, and I'm sure we don't have much control over that, because the prices of Dodger Stadium have gone up quite a bit.
Correct. So we basically just charge the, the rate that we get.
And they're going on a bus and, like they have before?
Correct, yes. It's including the bus transportation, transportation and parking as well.
Right.
That's, that's unfortunate, unfortunately, the price of Dodger tickets.
I think just park to park at Dodger Stadium is like $35 or something like that, so.
How much is a ticket now?
Depends on where you sit.
Well, how about the cheap seats? How much?
I think the cheapest seat is, probably goes for probably $50 now or something like that.
I, I think it's actually over, yes.
Cheap, cheap. Last night, since Shohei Ohtani pitched, the average ticket price went from $125 to $250 overnight.
I saw that they're having, you probably know, Tom, one of the upcoming games, they're having an anniversary jersey, it's gold. Did you, what is that jersey?
Yeah, that's Thursday, I think. They're having a gold jersey.
It looks so nice.
Bring those out every once in a while, yeah. Yeah, it's, you know, like everything else, the economy, you know, but.
Well, if you're craving a Dodger dog?
Arco.
Arco.
I haven't tried them yet, but I understand.
I tried it because I saw a Dodger dog. It tasted just like a Dodger dog.
There you go.
And it's, I think it's $2 for $4.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And it's wrapped in this silver Dodger, right here, on Baldwin.
Yeah, $5, $4 won't even buy the condiments at Dodger Stadium, I don't think.
Anyway, I had to laugh because I thought, wow, you can come here.
There you go.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Chen?
Yes, so first of all, thank Councilmember Chavez for all his service. I know running a tournament as tournament director is very time-consuming, and, but it brings so much joy to many families. Temple City, we're home to two Little Leagues, and it's just been really amazing to see the community coming together and pack, filling the stands and cheering on the, cheering on the kids. And so I think the, we're, we're doing quite well. We're looking forward to a great Tournament of Champions and All-Star season, and I look forward, I thank Mayor Sternquist as well for recognizing some of our city championship winners, starting at the next meeting, July 1st. We'll follow up on that and make sure we recognize some of our winners for these, these games.
I was, I was able to sit with Ed last night at the game, but we didn't talk any city business, because of course that would have been a violation. We just talked baseball.
Yes.
Did you both happen to talk about the necessity for possibly enhancing that snack bar?
Well, the snack bar actually has been doing pretty well.
How's it doing? Okay.
Yeah, they're doing well, considering, you know, it's, I, you know, it's, it's funny. When I go there as a district administrator for Little League, of course, many of them know my position in the city. So I do get hit up quite a bit for issues that are happening at the park, but that's okay. What better way to, to get things accomplished than letting me know? And then, of course, I go straight to Brian, and Brian takes care of it right away.
Absolutely.
Or Adam. So it's, it's a good teamwork there, but yeah, it's been fun.
All right, so moving on, I'm pleased to report, I've been elected to the chair of this Metro San Gabriel Valley Service Council after being on the council floor last year. I thank Brian Cook for helping to, and also Mayor Sternquist for her guidance over the last year, getting on that service council. Pleased to report that Councilmember John Wu from San Gabriel was also sworn in to the council that night, replacing former councilmember John Harrington, so looking forward to a productive year. And last and finally, I went to the LA County Water Summit held at the LA County Public Works Building, and I saw former Mayor Carl Bloom, who's been very involved in that space. So I saw that we have in our budget line item quite a bit from Measure W, I think staff's creativity and steadfast, I mean, the work that's been put in. So I look forward to working with former Mayor Bloom, engaging in how we can best utilize those restrictive funding to, to better our, our city. Love you all.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the Good News Church that where Annie came and, oh, councilmember, man, I'm sorry.
I think you did that last time. I think he has to sit on the other side.
I think so.
It's because you go from one side to the next.
I know, that's why.
Well, between last meeting and this meeting, I was not in town, so I don't have much to say about city business, per se.
You look awfully tanned.
I, I was in Rome and Greece and Turkey.
Have fun.
So my first time there, but in terms of how it relates back to the city, I got a glimpse as, as to how, I guess, European life is different than ours. And me being the, I can never take off my civil engineer hat, so over there, I just kept looking at the infrastructure and how different it was. Here, we're talking about paving our roads, and over in Rome, they have these cobblestone roads that they don't really need to maintain too much. So they've, and you go to some of these ancient ruin sites, and they got these marble cobblestones and things that have been there for thousands of years. And I go, well, maybe we should put down cobblestone roads in Temple City.
And bring horses back?
Bring horses back. But it's, it's different, it's a very walkable, like Rome is very walkable. We didn't have to take a car, we didn't even take the subway or the bus, we just walked everywhere. But what I did notice was here, again, going back to roads, we always talk about, when we do roads, we do curb ramps for ADA compliance. There is no ADA compliance in Rome. It does not exist. And I don't know why I think about these things, but I'm like imagining someone in a wheelchair or someone, or even if you're pushing a stroller around with your kid, these cobblestone roads are so bumpy. We're, we didn't bring one for, for the kids. But I, I saw one, one couple who was pushing the stroller, and I kept looking at the kid, and I was like, there's no way that kid's going to sleep, because the stroller's just bouncing off the cobblestone roads. But anyway, besides the infrastructure, I had a great time, a lot of history. The people were friendly, very welcoming, food was great. I was joking with Mayor Sternquist earlier, I'm not sure if I could eat Italian food back in the States after having eaten Italian food in Rome. But yeah, it was overall. But yeah, it was overall a great experience. I'm glad to be back. I'm looking forward to the grand opening of our, of our new playground. I know that's been a long time coming, and I still remember fondly the work we did on the Standing Committee. And so to kind of see this all come to fruition is very, very, very exciting. And even in our budget, we've kind of budgeted for two other parks, obviously not of the same scale, but it just shows that there's a lot of things going on that we, we're looking forward to. So, so very, very happy to be back and looking forward to all the activities that we have going on for the summer.
Thank you. So I did attend the Good News Church. It was a over-three-hour prayer service. It was very long, a lot of praying, but it was, there must have been close to two hundred people. They had a lovely breakfast, it's right across the street from St. Luke's, and it was really nice. They were pleased that there was someone there from the city council. It was a lovely event, it was just, it was long. The concerts in the park, the first one had a really good turnout, and everybody seemed to be having a great time, so I look forward to more of those. The volunteer dinner was lovely, and I think everybody enjoyed that so much, too. Councilmember Chavez came, and it was a nice turnout. We had a lot of volunteers there. It's interesting, you know, you talked about Rome and the infrastructure, and they don't know any different, right? And here, we're so spoiled, and we complain about a little pothole. And you go to Rome in Italy, and everybody manages, and, and, I don't know, it's, it's just interesting.
Well, unfortunately, it's not limited to the international. You go to New Orleans, and the sidewalks are like this places. And of course, I do the same thing William does, is I put my JPIA hat on, or attorney hat, and then how did they get away with this? You must not have any lawsuits or anything, because?
Maybe not.
They don't repair. It's just, it is the way it is.
I think we're very spoiled in the United States.
Yeah.
I think we are. Okay. Are there any additional public comments from anyone in the audience? Nope. Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.